Hello, how is everybody today? If everybody could grab a seat, grab one in particular because there may not be enough. And we need to know if we need to bring more in. For an event that we had 24 people RSVP to, this is a stellar crowd. We thank you all very, very much for being here. My name is Jason Mumpower. I'm Chief of Staff with the Office of the Comptroller of the Treasury. And this is our main conference room here in the Comptroller's office. We appreciate having you here. Why are we here? We're here for one simple reason. Because the Tennessee Legislature is considering legislation that would potentially create a fee structure for inspection of records. The Legislature considered that bill earlier this year and put it off until next year. And in the meantime, they asked the Comptroller's office to conduct public hearings and collect public comment on this subject during this fall. So that's what we're here to talk about today. That's why I know you're here. I will tell you, having been a former member of the Legislature myself, that your voice is very important. And I can assure you that the Legislature wants to hear what you have to say regarding this issue. And we had our first public hearing last night in Knoxville, which was a tremendous crowd. Another tremendous crowd today. And we're having our third public hearing at the Comptroller's office in Jackson tomorrow from 3:00 to 5:00 p.m. Some people here in this room were there last night, are here today. So if you want to do it with us again tomorrow, come to Jackson. I see them nodding, they're going to be there. So we're going to have some three timers. One thing that I will say is that no decision will be made today. Our role as the Comptroller's office is just to collect your voice. We don't have decision-making power in the process, but I guarantee you, whether you speak today, whether you send us written comment, or whether you fill out our surveys online, and I know many of you have already filled out the online survey, every one of your voices, whatever way you deliver it, will be delivered to the Legislature. One thing I will say as well is that there may be people here today, in fact, I know there are, that have different views on this subject. You'll probably see people standing here speaking who come up and express different views. That's okay. That's what this is about. I'll ask everyone to please, regardless of how you feel about what the speaker's saying, whether you like it or whether you don't, that you don't respond to that here, okay? Everybody deserves a chance to be respected and to be heard in this public hearing. Today, participants are going to be allowed three minutes to deliver your remarks. The way it's going to work is, in just a few minutes, our Open Records Council and Butterworth will call the first speaker, will call the second speaker, and the third speaker. These are the on-deck chairs. The first speaker will come right here, the second one here, and the third one here. And we'll keep that going so that we don't lose any time with people coming up. Right here in front of me is Rudy Basildua, who works for the Comptroller's office. As you're speaking, Rudy will hold up a piece of paper when you have 30 seconds left. And then, when your time's up, he'll hold up another piece of paper and ring a bell. Now, I have to tell you that before Rudy worked for the Comptroller's office, he was a United States Marine. And you don't want to go over the bell, okay? Less Rudy should have to be called back into action. So if you will, please, respect the bell so that everybody has time to speak. Again, we thank you. We appreciate this turnout. I know some of you here listen, some of you are here to speak. I'm going to turn it over to our Open Records Council, Ann Butterworth, and when she finishes, we'll start the process. Does anybody have any questions? Or does everyone understand the process, the speaking and the on-deck seats? Everybody good? Thank you very much.
Well, welcome, everyone. There are quite a few people here that it's really great for me to be able to put faces with names. I've spoken with you in the past on various public records issues. Access to public records issues in Tennessee is provided for by legislation, as enacted by our General Assembly. And we refer to it as the Tennessee Public Records Act. It's found in the Tennessee Code, Sections 10, 7, it's Part 5, but really starting with Section 503. The hearing today and the Tennessee Public Records Act relate to records held by Tennessee governmental entities, the state, county, municipal, and other entities. The hearing today will not deal with federal entities or issues related to the Freedom of Information Act. As most of you know, the Tennessee Public Records Act grants Tennessee citizens the right to inspect and to receive a copy or duplicate of public records that have not been made specifically confidential or closed to public inspection. It's important to note that taxpayer status is not a prerequisite to the right to inspect or to receive a duplicate. Many entities that are subject to the Tennessee Public Records Act are not taxing authorities and do not receive tax revenues, such as a utility district, which receives funding only from its customer base. Now, one other point, please, everybody, at this point, go ahead and silence your cellphones. Generally speaking, a requestor cannot be required to put their request in writing or to disclose the purpose or motivation behind their request. A Tennessee custodian cannot deny a Tennessee citizen the right to inspect an open record on the basis that the requestor does not live within their jurisdiction or is not a customer or client of the entity. And please remember, the Public Records Act is not the only means of access to records by governmental entities. There are many other provisions in law that require records to be open and available, such as the Tennessee Open Meetings Act, that requires minutes of meetings to be open for public inspection. Public Records Act directs records custodians to make public records available promptly. Although the Public Records Act starts with the presumption that records will be open for inspection, the exemptions to inspection are numerous, well over 350. They're scattered throughout the statutes, case law, court rules, at both state and federal level, and they change constantly. A record custodian is obligated to maintain as confidential any record or information designated as such, and therefore may not permit public inspection of a record that is confidential. A record custodian is currently not permitted to charge for staff time locating and preparing records for inspection, which would include redacting a record if the request is only to inspect. Those costs, however, under current law, may be recovered if the requestor asks for copies. Labor and charges are governed by the Schedule of Reasonable Charges established by the Office of Open Records Council, with advice and input from the Advisory Committee on Open Government. And at this time, I would like for all the members of the Advisory Committee on Open Government who are here today to please stand. And these folks represent industry knowledge and provide incredible assistance to the Office of Open Records Council. So I appreciate their assistance on the council and for being present here today. As was indicated before, we'll have timekeeping. And I appreciate very much all of you being present here today. And I believe that Jason mentioned that we are going to be accepting the comments and the online survey responses through the end of the month. So if you didn't bring your comments today, please, go ahead and send them to us by the 30th.
And one more note, if you will, when you come to speak, if you'll stand here, the recorder is right here. The audio of this session will be on YouTube. No video on YouTube, but there will be audio on YouTube, and it's being collected right here. I'll also note that you see microphones here, but those are not working to project your voice today. So when you speak from here, you'll do your best to project, so I know some people in the back have had hearing difficulty already. So unless there's any questions, Ann, if you'll name the first three participants, then we can get started.
Marian Ott, Nancy Stinson, and Harold Hoover. Mr. Hoover.
My name is Marian Ott, and I am President of the League of Women Voters of Tennessee. The League is a nonpartisan political organization that encourages informed and active citizen participation in government. The League of Women Voters opposes fees for the inspection of public records. While some may feel that fees to inspect public records are an effective way to reduce burdensome requests, we suggest that fees for inspecting public records are akin to a poll tax for accessing government. Some citizens will simply not be able to afford the fees and thus will be blocked from access to public records. Governments should be encouraged to make as much public information readily accessible as possible. Fees send the message that they're doing citizens a favor by providing them information. Recordkeeping is already paid for through taxes. It's the responsibility of government to maintain records in an efficient way to respond for requests for public information. Fees for inspecting records could morph into a revenue source and could easily be inflated by padding the amount it takes to compile a request. Fees discourage entities from keeping records in a readily accessible way in the first place. Discussion between the requestor and government should be required if a request is voluminous and requires lots of time. This would allow government staff more flexibility, as well as create a more efficient process for both the citizen and the government entity. The Office of Open Records Council should consider developing best practices for the organizing of information to reduce the requirement and expense for redaction. For example, if personal emails are to be redacted out, perhaps a policy at reducing the use of government email addresses for personal emails would reduce redaction expense. Frequently requested information, such as meeting materials and audit reports, should of course be routinely posted to a government website in a timely manner. This is an efficient way to make them accessible to a large number of people. However, we should not distinguish between the types of public records. That people get to see some records, but others are judged as not created for the public consumption. By setting up a two-tiered system, we automatically say citizens should have access to some public records, but not others unless they can pay, again, the poll tax. Citizens should be allowed to take pictures of public documents with smartphones or other devices without being charged. This eliminates the direct expensive copies and thus justification of a copy fee. It has the benefit of encouraging less use of paper. My remarks are a summary of the detailed response already submitted by the League of Women Voters of Tennessee. We thank you for the opportunity to provide input and strongly encourage that fees not be established for the inspection of public records. Thank you.
Hello, and thank you for having this meeting. My comments were over five minutes long, so I'm going to do the best I can. But my name's Nancy Stinson. I'm just a private property owner. And I just want you to know, I want everyone to know how important it is to keep the records free and accessible to everyone, because right now, they're all we have to work with. In 2010, in 2009, 2010, our property was impacted by a City of White House sewer project called Cope's Crossing that was funded with some of the Recovery Act money and the State Revolving Fund. It was a project that was just going to bring detriment to our property while the city would benefit and a major developer would benefit. Our property was taking the hit. All we wanted was, if they were going to do it, to pay us for projects' impact to our Our private property was put into an active bidding process. And through a manipulation of the SRF site approval process, it got all the way through the federal checklist and the SRF authority to award the construction contract. While on the city side, the project had not enough money, did not have a complete site, was in the hands of a, he was the low bidder, but the contractor had ties to the developer, partnership ties to the developer on either side of us. They had ties all the way back to the City Hall. And it was just a situation where we didn't want to be a part of it. If we had to be a part of it, we wanted to be treated fairly. They didn't have enough money. They didn't have the site in place. They had us right in the middle of it, pressuring us to give them what they had already bid out, and we had no idea. We had no idea the situation we were in. At that time, we asked for information. I had never requested a document in my life, except maybe a birth certificate or a medical record. At that time, it was like 16 days before the federal deadline, I asked a question. I said, "We would like to know how this has been presented to the State of Tennessee in regards to us and to our property, especially since the era of funding is involved. Are we entitled to view these documents?" The city administrator replied that she would gather the documents because they were public record. The Ways Rudder Director replied, among other things, that obtaining easements was the sole responsibility of the city. The state was unconcerned with specifics. I have talked to Sherwin Smith SRF. He says they are concerned with specifics. But the city administrator began to emailing us documents. We got 30-page documents, 80-page documents, 50-page documents. None of the documents spoke to what was going on to our property. None of them helped. Are you done already? My time's up?
Danielle Kuntz.
Okay, thank you. Thank you.
Ladies and gentlemen, my name's Mark Pody. I am a state representative, so a lot of these are going to be coming, so I would be able to hear them at the Capitol. But I am so passionate, I wanted to be here myself, to tell you that I am absolutely opposed to making it harder for anybody to find records. I will tell you that I rely on the press, I rely on the watch-all groups, I rely on citizens to go find the information, because if I need to vote on something, I don't have the time or the staff to do it. I need help doing it. And it's because public citizens will help find that information. They can give me the information that I need to vote on other issues. So I just wanted to express that I'm very much opposed to making it harder for any citizen to come in. If we're going to be a government of the people, by the people, the people have a right to find that information. And I just wanted to hear all the other comments as well. I won't take up that time. Thank you.
Do I get his time?
I'm Debra Fisher. I'm the Executive Director of Tennessee Coalition for Open Government, which is a 12-year-old alliance of media organizations, individual citizens, attorneys who specialize in First Amendment law, and nonprofit groups who have an interest in good government and open government. We do education and training in an effort to promote transparency. We believe that changing Tennessee law to allow government to charge citizens' labor fees when they merely want to look at government records will block access. It would create a new exemption to the Tennessee Public Records Act. A record is exempt if you cannot afford the fee set by the government official to see it. Intentionally or unintentionally, we think fees would choke off citizen access to public records. Fees are especially hard to police and control. We don't have to look far for examples. Since 2008, we've had the Schedule of Reasonable Fees for when someone wants copies of public records. This schedule needs an overhaul. It needs to espouse the principles of Tennessee Code 84604 that says, among other things, that providing information to the public is an essential function of a representative government and an integral part of the routine duties and responsibilities of public officers and employees, and that excessive fees and other rules shall not be used to hinder access. Yet, under the schedule, a school district calculated it could charge a reporter $2,000 just to find out how much the school district spent for outside lawyers for one year. A Morristown utility used the schedule to say it would charge a TV station $1,300 before letting a reporter see travel records for top officials, records that show much more was spent in extravagant and inappropriate trips than in making the records available to the journalist. The Department of Children's Services used the schedule to calculate that it would charge a media organization more than $55,000 for records of child deaths, including time for state employees to physically drive files to Nashville. These are not reasonable fees. They don't encourage common sense or efficiency, but ostensibly, they are thought to be allowed under the schedule. The schedule was imposed without any formal study. There was no effort to modernize the law, for example, giving citizens an option to receive records in database format. Government entities have been found to exceed their authority. One has refused to accept records requests by email. Others won't let citizens take photos of public records with smartphones. Still, others have been caught imposing fees for copies without getting permission from the local government authority. Keep in mind, there is no way in our current law to enforce the Public Records Act or to challenge reasonable fees, except for a citizen filing a lawsuit, which is very expensive. We need to take a serious look at fixing current problems in our laws and rules before coming up with new fees that will create even more. Thanks.
Hello. I am Daniela Kuntz, and I'm the founder and president of Parents for Student Safety. And I wanted to say that I also, a few years ago, I requested some open records. And it was already challenging to do so. And I wanted just to say that adding also some fees to even just view open records, I think that's not something that will help to ease, make it easier to request open records. I am opposed to this. I think government should be transparent. I think we all have a right to see open records, and it should not be burdened with even more fees. I understand when copies are made, that somebody, I mean, after a certain amount of copies, that it is fair to maybe charge an amount, an appropriate amount, but not exceeding, it just must be within certain parameters. That's pretty much it.
Robert Nelson. Bobby Nelson, I'm here. Allison Gobler. I'm good, okay.
Good morning. My name is Susan Curley, and I am a municipal board member in Williamson County and also Williamson County resident. Last September, I submitted my first-ever open records request. Had no idea what would follow. But I can tell you that it's not only the cost and the fees that are hurdles to transparency. What transpired after was not only a long delay, I was repeatedly placed in positions which were somewhat intimidating, and asked to drop my request multiple times. Also, the number of records that were yielded for my request was artificially inflated and pushed out to the media in such a way that I truly believe it was done to marginalize my character and to make it sound as though my request was unreasonable. I saw this happen time and again with others who also submitted records requests. Interestingly, though, those of particular political affiliations and leanings didn't have the same pushback. When we use open records and transparency and intimidation tactics as a tool, as a political tool, that is very wrong. And it should not happen. It should not ever happen. Our citizens are paying taxes that fund those very public institutions. If they want to provide that extra set of eyes, those checks and balances, if there's nothing to hide, why hide it? Also, given technology today, there are ways to provide that level of transparency more cost-effectively in a common sense fashion, where those records can be provided timely to citizens who are interested. I echo those sentiments that have been made by the speakers who preceded me, and simply ask that if anything, it's time that we become more transparent and not less. Although I was told there was nothing to hide in those records, when people are telling you to drop it, but there's nothing to hide, usually that means they're hiding something. And what was found was actually turned over to the Tennessee Bureau of Campaign Ethics and Finance. And they had since deemed that political activity and found a group to be a political action committee. So again, thank you for your time this morning. Thank you for hearing all of us. And please make this process more transparent with fewer hurdles.
Hello, I'm Julie West. And I know we've heard a lot about the abuses in public records in the media recently. And I think before we can determine if things are abusive, we need to understand what's been discovered. One of the things that we discovered in my open records request, which again was related specifically to my family, was SBVIEW, a monitoring program that allowed a third party to monitor email correspondence without the sender or receiver being aware. Those emails were captured, they were sent to friendly political organizations, to friendly media outlets, and used to attack and smear citizens and elected officials that they did not agree with. We found in police reports, when harm was being done to children repeatedly, over and over and over again, the district indicates that they would prefer to handle the matter internally as an HR issue rather than criminally. This even included instances of likely sexual abuse in the school system. You've likely heard that my requests caused hundreds of thousands of hits and would have bankrupted all of Williamson County. What you probably never heard is that I've only ever submitted two requests. One went to the sheriff's department and was fulfilled very politely and courteously in 48 hours or less, and resulted in about $3 worth of fees. That my other request to the district still has not been fulfilled in its entirety. Some of the documents mysteriously disappeared. And you probably weren't informed that the numbers that were reported to the media were artificially inflated, because my last name happens to be West, and the district's address is on West Main, so anything that included the district's address was publicly reported. You probably weren't aware that it was just about my family, and that documents regarding my own children were redacted in their entirety, that I was not permitted to see them. After a great deal of insistence and being able to see documents concerning my own children, I was finally able to see items that one child sent to the district, asking them after multiple, potentially life-threatening attacks, why they wouldn't protect him, why they wouldn't keep him safe. I learned that not only was my Twitter account actively monitored by the district and other groups, but I found out that even prayer requests regarding my children from people in my church were on the server. Do we really want a government where they can know everything about us and we know nothing about them?
Thank you for hosting this public hearing today. My name is Maria Deverine, and I'm the News Director of The Tennessean. And we oppose fees to inspect public records. I know from firsthand experience that some government agencies and departments have used per-hour labor charges and delivery charges as a way to deliberately impede access to public records. When the Tennessean attempted to get public records, after our initial reporting showed that children were dying or in near-death situations while under the watch of the state's Department of Children's Services, the costs levied by that department were extreme. The Tennessean wanted to examine how the agency handled cases, and more importantly, what the processes and procedures were to ensure that more children in Tennessee wouldn't die when the state was charged with protecting them. But the agency fought us at every turn. After several months of making public records requests and arguing about why we should get those records, the state said the Tennessean could obtain them if we paid more than $55,000. We, along with a coalition of media companies throughout the state, sued, and Judge Carol McCoy ruled in our favor. Those records showed that during a terrible two-and-a-half-year period, more than 200 children died or were in near-death situations while under the agency's watch. We eventually spent thousands of dollars for copies of those records, but it was still only a fraction of what the state originally tried to charge us. You can imagine... You can imagine how prohibitive that would be for a citizen or a smaller media company. Our reporting led to massive changes in how the department operated and the procedures of how they handled cases going forward. The DCS case is just one example of why making public records available to the media and to the public is critical. The TPRA should not permit record custodians to charge for the inspection of public records. Even if blocking access to the records is not the deliberate intent, the expense will have that effect. The Tennessean routinely pays hundreds and often thousands of dollars for copies of public records. My news colleagues throughout the state—from Jackson and Morristown to Knoxville and Chattanooga —have faced similar excessive costs. Under existing law, there is no way to monitor the fees charged for producing copies, and there are no limits on what agencies or departments can charge. The same will be true with inspection fees. Watchdog journalism provides an important check and balance on government agencies, as we saw in our DCS coverage. Adding hundreds of thousands of dollars of additional expenses to simply inspect records will result in a reduction of reporting.
My name is Doug Pierce, and I’m speaking today on behalf of the Tennessee Association of Broadcasters. The TAB opposes any imposition of cost for inspection of records in this state. As just one example, I represented a television newsroom that received reliable information—inside information—that public money was being misspent by a governmental board, but when they asked for the documents to confirm that information, they said it would cost more than $1,000. But at least the station was allowed to look at the documents and confirm that information. But if a cost is imposed, the news organizations in this state cannot provide that information to the citizens of this state. And no less than the U.S. Supreme Court has recognized on repeated occasions that the news media serves as a surrogate for the public at large to provide information so that the public can know what is going on. The point is, is that the Tennessee Public Records Act has existed since 1957, and so for 58 years, the citizens of this state have been allowed to look at records without a cost. And so the question is—the issue to be answered—is why now, after 58 years, we have to impose a cost upon the citizens of Tennessee? And the only suggestion that I’ve seen as an explanation was that, “Well, we now have 350 exemptions.” Well, that’s true. There are a lot of exemptions, and it makes it complicated. But there have not always been 350 exemptions. Back in the late ‘80s, the General Assembly appointed Representative—then Representative Bill Purcell, who would become mayor of this city, over a special committee to evaluate the open records law. At that time, the General Assembly found that there were 89 exemptions. So as the expression goes, “You do the math.” In less than 30 years, we’ve gone from 89 exemptions to over 350, and there’s no signs of slowing up. I’ve watched this for more than 30 years, and there’s no slowing down, and I think it’s safe to say that in another 30 years, we’re going to have about 800 exemptions. And so it is a complicating factor, but the issue is, what can we do to make government more transparent? And the issue is not, “Well, keep applying more exemptions, and then let’s just charge people for the records.” That is not the answer. As has been said, that imposes a poll tax. It increases a lack of transparency. We need to have more transparency, and what needs to be done—as what was done by Representative Bill Purcell’s committee—was to go back and do what they did, and that’s look at some of these exemptions and see if we can cut out the exemptions, and let’s use technology not just to create more records, but rather to find ways to streamline and allow the public greater access to these records without imposing a cost upon citizens.
Good morning, and thank you for having me here. My name is Andrea Zalinski, and I have spent my career covering politics and government and all its amazing machinations. And this topic we’re talking about today is important for people like me to highlight the workings of government and how journalists find information about it. I’m here as president-elect of the Society of Professional Journalists, Middle Tennessee Chapter. The SPJ is an organization rich in history of defending freedom of information, championing efforts to strengthen access to information, and maintaining a constant vigilance to protect the First Amendment and a culture where journalists can report freely. I’m also here as someone who practices journalism both as news editor of the Nashville Scene and as a reporter who spent many days in the windowless hallways of Legislative Plaza covering state government. I’ve also worked as a watchdog following the metro school board. All that to say is, I work regularly covering multiple levels of government. I spend my time explaining both sides of issues, but it’s my responsibility here today as a journalist and tax-paying member of our society to say that charging fees to inspect documents is taking a step in the wrong direction. It taxes citizens three times for the same thing. First, people pay taxes to government to do work that justifies these documents. Second, people pay salaries for the people to gather these documents. And now to propose that people pay again to see—not copy, but to see these documents does a discredit to the principle of open government. The barriers to inspect when government is doing with their tax salaries should be welcome to all members of our society to ensure the accountability of elected officials. Trust but verify is a common trope in our profession. Journalists and the general public should be able to access information to verify what is happening in government to tell the fullest story possible. Another common saying is, “Sunshine is the best disinfectant,” and making documents less acceptable allows for unwanted creatures to grow on the shadows. Instituting a fee to view public information is a step in the wrong direction towards the dangers of secrecy, which can be powerful in the wrong hands. Requiring an entry fee to view information would hamper journalists of any size publication but will disproportionately affect reporters of midsize and smaller outlets who can ill-afford fees to examine documents critical to understanding how government works. The charges invite abuse from staffers or departments that wish to keep information about what is happening in our publicly-funded institution secret, and the people who lose are readers and the public who need to understand their government. I ask that you recommend against instituting a fee to inspect records, and we’re happy to answer questions as you further explore this issue.
Panel members, thank you for the opportunity to speak this morning. My name is Demetria Kalidimos. I’ve been an anchor and reporter at WSMV Channel 4, the NBC affiliate in town, since 1984. That’s almost 32 years and five governors, if you’re counting. In those three-plus decades, trends and technology have come and gone in TV, but the linchpins of journalism have not wavered or changed. The quest for truth might begin with a hunch or a tip, or, these days, a tweet, but conclusions and proof—in some cases guilt or innocence, indeed life and death—can hinge on consistent, accurate, reliable, official records. We couldn’t confidently report on crimes, crashes, arrests, elections, birth or death, without seeing something in writing. And with the proliferation of unreliable sources—spoofs, photo-shops, viral rumors—it’s becoming difficult to determine what you trust. Records are our tools, every bit as much as the notebook, camera, recorder, or computer. Reliable documentation is our GPS. It guides us, and in the end, it provides a litmus test for fairness and accuracy. Put simply, we verify and then we report, and that’s not always quick or easy. Just like your doctor ordering dozens of tests to try to diagnose an ailment, we often need to cast a wide net. We need to look at many possibilities and patterns to determine where the truth might be hiding. When a reporter or member of the media makes a request for official records, be it one page or thousands, remember, that’s not me asking as a reporter. The reporter is you, your children, your elderly parents, spouse, friends, and neighbors. The reporter is proxy for the public. To make that reporter drop a dime in the turnstile or risk being locked out from public information is essentially denying yourself access to the truth. Think about it. Public records belong to the people. Taxpayers have already paid the salaries of government employees to create and produce the documents. If government then adds fees as an obstacle to look at those records or keep them hidden away, the cost of that kind of secrecy is high. I can’t begin to list all the stories I’ve been able to report because I saw the records and all of the records I asked for. I remember sitting on a floor every Friday morning at LNC Tower with reams and boxes of public records. The access allowed me to report on decades of insidious chemical water pollution in Dixon County that no one had connected the dots on. We believe Tennessee has had a mutually respectful and successful system for the press and the public. The TPRA should not permit record custodians to charge for inspection of public records. We shouldn’t slap a price tag on the pursuit of truth. The very nature of research requires boundless curiosity, and you kill that when you start considering what it might cost you. If it seems unreasonable to look at every email or every memo, consider what would happen if you looked at only the paperwork you could afford. Thank you.
Thank you for giving us the time today to discuss what many of us consider to be the lifeblood of our industry, which is public records. My name is Jeremy Finley. I’m an anchor and reporter at WSMV Channel 4 here in Nashville, and I’ve been asking for public records since I first became a reporter at 17 years old. I’m in my 40s now, so you can do the math and see how long I have been reviewing and fighting to review public records my entire adult life. I’m honored to work at a TV station alongside reporters like Demetria and Nancy, also my colleagues at Channel 5 and The Tennessean and their investigative units. Because of them and thanks to their work, by the time I arrived here 13 years ago, there was already a legacy in place for some of the best investigative reporting in this country. The people of Tennessee know this. Make no mistake. Our tip line is filled every day with people asking for our help. I can’t tell you how many times a week someone will call me or email me and say, “Get these records, because only you guys can.” And I always tell them, “That’s not true. You can get them too. These are public records.” But as Demetria just mentioned, this is how we serve them. We get these records because citizens rely on us to get them. So I want you to imagine somebody calling us, telling us that there’s a problem with a city or state agency that needs investigating, and we have to tell them, “Well, my station has a pretty tight budget these days, so not only can we not afford to look at these public records, likely you can’t either.” I’ll tell them, “Sorry that you know of corruption or taxpayer waste, but no one these days can afford to seek out public records anymore. That is the future that will be created if you start charging to view public records.” Make no mistake, the fight over the cost of these records is already happening. Recently, the investigative unit where I work simply asked for records from a state agency. We got an estimate back: $1,500. This is the same agency that charged me $800 for public records six months earlier. Much of the cost wasn’t copies. It was a state employee working for one hour a day for eight weeks to compile my request. So now imagine you’re a citizen asking for those same records. All you have to do is come up with $2,309. Ask yourself, can you come up with that right now? A year ago, I was tipped off to the fact that two city officials in a nearby city were essentially double-dipping, working a city job while at the same time making money off another city job. It required extensive review of public records, and at first, the city balked at my request. They said, “Look, we don’t have the staff, and we don’t have the people to redact these records.” So I suggested, and I worked with them, and I said, “Look, all you have to do is make the records that are public, public, and since there was no personal information on them, there was no need to redact them.” I suggested I would go through them and that I would bring a portable scanner, so there would be no cost for the copies. I sat for a week reviewing these. In the end, we found such double-dipping that city officials had to pay back the city the money. I know you’re looking for solutions to what some believe are citizens abusing the requests for public records, but there’s a reason all citizens want these records, because they belong to them. Thanks for your time.
I am Nancy Ammons. I’ve been a reporter at WSMV in Nashville for more than 25 years. Please keep public records open and free in Tennessee. The information’s been collected and produced by public servants for the benefit and the protection of the public. It’s information that belongs to the public, and taxpayers have already paid for it. Over the years, I’ve produced a lot of stories based on public records, stories that help parents protect their families, that help consumers protect their wallets, and help expose wrongdoing. We are the watchdogs of the public. Here are a few examples of some of the stories recently that I’ve done for my station, which could have been deterred if we were charged high fees. This year, I looked into non-competitive contracts at the Rutherford County Sheriff’s Department. The contracts showed that some of the sheriff’s employees were privately benefiting from insider deals. The stories led to an FBI investigation. My stories using public records also found a serious lack of oversight in Davidson County Probate Court. People who were unable to care for themselves were being taken advantage of by their guardians. One guardian went to prison after the district attorney pursued criminal charges based on what we had found. If the public cannot access these kind of records, abuse of the elderly and the infirm can go undetected. An accident investigation performed by TOSHA on the Music City Center found that one construction company had ignored safety warnings that led to a serious injury. The public has the right to know if the companies they work for are safe. They have a right to know if TOSHA is diligent in holding dangerous employers to task. The health and the welfare and the safety of the public is everyone’s business. Parents deserve to know if their child’s cafeteria is serving food from a clean kitchen. They deserve to know if a daycare has passed inspection or if a public swimming pool is contaminated. They deserve to know if inspectors found safety problems at amusement parks. Citizens have a right to know if a gas station has been shorting them, if a professional has had his license suspended, if bridge inspectors are goofing off instead of doing their job, if children are dying in DCS custody. Agencies and departments don’t always want the public looking into what they’re doing. They don’t want the public to check to see if they’re misappropriating tax dollars or sleeping on the job or wasting money. The public relies on journalists to ferret out corruption and hold government accountable. And again, it’s very important to note, the public has the same right to access this information that the media does. Members of the general public may not have the money that we do to pay these research fees. Access to government information should not be hampered by the ability to pay. Thank you.
My name is Phil Williams. I’m the chief investigative reporter for WTBF in Nashville. I am also on the National Board of Directors for the investigative reporters and editors. IRE is a national organization that trains investigative and watchdog journalists all across the country and around the globe. We have members all across the state of Tennessee, some that you’ve heard from, people in newsrooms large and small—from Memphis to Johnson City to Chattanooga and in between. It has often been said that the power to tax is the power to destroy. What is being proposed here would give public officials the unprecedented tool to thwart the public’s right to know. Make no mistake about that. This proposal comes at a time that news organizations face unprecedented financial pressures as a result of seismic shifts in technology that threaten the revenue streams that have traditionally financed good journalism. It is important to note that the most complex government programs, often involving millions and millions of taxpayer dollars, can only be fully evaluated and understood through detailed public records requests. This proposal would threaten that. My formal remarks have many examples, but I can point out here one example. My experience has been that frequently, the public officials who have the most to hide are the ones who scream the loudest about the burden imposed by the Public Records Act. One example I’ll give you: Three years ago, my colleagues at News Channel 5 and I exposed serious financial improprieties at the Upper Cumberland Development District in Cookeville. The UCDD executive director had poured more than $1 million of agency money into a luxurious home that had become her home. As we tried to investigate the financial improprieties, we were met with all sorts of roadblocks. The agency officials there tried to thwart our inquiries. They tried to come up with excuses for not producing public records. They destroyed public records. In one case, they created bogus public records to try to justify a $300,000 expenditure. Now, imagine what would have happened if those officials had had the capability to impose a fee just to inspect. Every year, IRE gives out an award, a not-so-cevitate award called the Golden Padlock Award, for the agency that does the most to thwart the public’s right to know. Our winner this year was awarded the dubious distinction because it had tried to impose tens of $1,000 in fees. Please do not let that happen in Tennessee.
Hello, and thank you for allowing everyone to come and voice their opinion. I am Sheila Luckett, the deputy city manager and city recorder— I am Sheila Luckett, the deputy city manager and city recorder for the City of Mount Juliet. And we do support the fee for inspection of personnel files. Personnel files are open to the public. In our police department, we get numerous requests for those files. Every time a police personnel file is requested, we have to copy that entire file, which includes accommodations, certificates, everything they've received over their tenure with the city, which could be many years. When we redact, of course, we redact the social security number. We redact personal information to protect the officer and his family. In two circumstances, we had one person who applied for a position. He was not interviewed. He requested personnel files. We had to go through the copy process, the redaction process, to allow him to view them. Another instance, we had an employee in the police department who was terminated. She requested eighteen of her coworkers' personnel files. Some of them had been there over twenty years. They were thick files that we had to copy and redact to allow her to look at. We don't care that she looked at them, that's fine. But we feel like our employee time is valuable when it comes to the redaction and the copying. Thank you so much.
My name is Jimmy Gale. I'd like to thank the OORC for taking the time and effort to review some of the protocols of issuance, availability, and cost attached to available documents, and the difficulty in determining a custodian of specific records. We come before you today seeking expression in weakness and concerns in the bookkeeping and implementing of citizens' rights to better understand official efforts to review protocols and issuance of documents. I also want to ensure availability of documents in question among cost-related issues to be recognized from the outcome of this hearing. As a requester, I'm here to make sure that the records are available for the risk factors of clarity, public record-keeping accountability, and to review the difficult task in determining proper officials in charge of specific fields of record-keeping. It is unclear if the record-keeping fees have stalled the public's access to documents or not. We, as citizens of the state of Tennessee, are confident that the 109 General Assembly seeks to review and seriously values the concerns and transparency and validation of adhering to laws currently on the books. These laws should be met. Our request for public records that can become available in a statutory timely manner. The citizens of Tennessee are aware of the TPRA, the grants that Tennessee citizens have the right to inspect public records defined under Tennessee, annotated Section 107503. Under TPRA, we do not question the charges that are spelled out on the grant. However, we do question the availability of records as stated by TPRA. In the absence of availability of state documents, one has to question keeping citizens from becoming knowledgeable of an action is not in the best interest of the state. The Office of Open Records Council serves to the citizens of Tennessee as a resource of public records and is required to establish a reasonable charge for records under Tennessee Code annotated 84604. As stated previously, the fees are seen as acceptable if followed the OORC present guidelines. The concerning issue we seek to resolve is the constant problem of records not being available to the citizens, and we request the state of Tennessee follow its current protocol. We respectfully request a synergistic approach from the voice of this hearing. We are hoping to revise the approach to implement a fortified plan and improve communications between officials and citizens.
How do you do? My name is Bruce Wood. I'm the president of Burnt, a twenty-seven-year-old environmental group located here in Nashville. And first, I'd like to thank having this hearing, and also commend the Office of Open Records for their performance in keeping these records open. We've had problems with agencies, and we've gotten in touch with the Office of Open Records, and those problems have gone away. And so, we do have a good structure here in Tennessee. I think, just going down the list of questions, no, we're against allowing local agencies, state agencies, to charge for records. It's part of the price of doing business. It might be inconvenient, it might cause a time drain, but that's the way it is. We do pay taxes, and this should be part of that. One thing, this is against a small individual who wants to go in and get these records, whereas a big law firm, the big business, the big engineering firm can go in with their own Xerox and just copy the records. We are, like, one of the questions is, are you for the factors for the requesting copies of public records? Such factors as size by population of the county or municipality, the complexity of the request, to determine the charges? No, we do not think there should be any charges for these records. Thank you very much.
Hello, I'm Ken Jakes, and I came here today because I see this as an important issue. I'm having trouble trying to figure out what we're going to call this, if we put a fee on this, because it's certainly not going to be a public record. It'd be a record of those who can financially afford it. Everything's relative. Five dollars to one person is coke money. Five dollars to somebody else is the difference of reviewing a record or not. You know, until about a year and a half ago, I had never filed a public record request with Sumner County Board of Education. And let's get straight to the point. This came up not regarding the cost and inconvenience of a government entity. This is being brought up to relieve the heat. Let's put a little bomb on the burn, so to say. These school boards and government entities have been coming under fire by the journalists and by the citizens' activist groups, and the only way they can stop it is to price it out of their range. That's what it's all about, folks. It's got nothing to do with what the cost is. You're talking about cities spending millions of dollars and think they're worried about the cost of a record? Let's get to the point, that's what it's all about. You know, I had a friend tell me that lived in Sumner County, that he couldn't get the records in Sumner County School Board. I said, "Why?" He said, "They won't accept my public records request by telephone. They won't accept it by email." I said, "Well, that's against the law. They can't do that." So you know what? I decided I won't see that public record request. I want to see one that says you cannot make one by telephone or email. So I sent by email, followed by two telephone calls, which were recorded, one to the office, one to the cell phone, the records custodian. All I asked for was to review the public records policy of Sumner County Board of Education. They refused to give it to me, but what was ironic, they sent to me by email, telling me they could not accept my request by email. Figure that one out. So that led to legal proceedings. It's been a little over a year and a half now, and the final verdict will come out the twenty-ninth of this month. But folks, a year into this, through my attorney's request, through the discovery process, they provide to the court the public records policy which they were referencing, denying my request. But what was really ironic about that was, it came out in court that it was rote the day after I filed my request. These are the problems that's happening every day, and you know, people can get up here and say, "Well, this is about all the inconvenience." Let me tell you something, it's not about the inconvenience. It's about taking the heat off government individuals and making them not accountable. And people, citizens are not getting a free ride. I paid to park today. How about the rest of y'all? I had a whole lot registered at the house and got a copy made, but you know, it costs money to go downtown. Start asking about credit card statements. Start asking about their emails. Start asking for their text messages, and see how open this government is. Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Laura Begert. I reside in Sumner County, Tennessee. My husband and I are also known as Sumner Taxpayers Alliance. However, I'm speaking to you as an individual citizen. If you do choose to view us as Sumner Taxpayer Alliance, be sure to picture the thousands of people behind us that we represent. First, I want to thank you for the thorough process you have put together with the online surveys in these public hearings. These activities are certainly reflective of the Comptroller Office's mission to improve the quality of life for all Tennesseans by making government work better. My response to question one, should records custodians be permitted to charge for inspection of records, is no. My reason for saying no relates to the concept of best practice. After all, who sets their goal to be anything less than the best? Rather than you taking my word for it or experiences, I started out by trying to find out what other states do. If any of you have tried to do that, you'll find out it's a pretty daunting task. In the course of my research, though, I thankfully came upon an organization called Better Government Association, BGA, a ninety-year-old, nonpartisan, nonprofit organization that looks at government at all levels. In 2013, the BGA published its third integrity index. The intent of the index is to inform people in all fifty states about their commitment the legislators have to integrity in four areas that BGA measures. They measure the strength or integrity of the state's laws regarding freedom of information, open meetings, whistleblower protection, and conflict of interest. The index does not look at the state's corruptions, but just what safeguards are in place against corruption. In BGA's view, the integrity laws are essential in creating an environment that preserves democracy, enabling everyday people to trust but verify what their public officials are or are not doing. The index measures states against BGA-researched best practices and scores on a scale of a hundred percent. The states are then compared against each other and given a rank of one to fifty. The laws are looked at from the perspective of an average citizen, and their ability to obtain documents with the least amount of government interference and bureaucratic hurdles. They look at three topics: procedures, barriers, and penalties. The topics are assigned criteria and weighted to determine the state's scores and rankings. So as your interest piqued at how Tennessee did, well, in the area of open records, Tennessee scored thirty-eight point five percent out of a hundred and ranked thirty-eight of fifty. While certainly it's not as bad as it could be, we can probably all agree it's still a failing grade, and that was before this new proposed legislation. So why do we score so low? I'll provide the details to you, but the short story is, the criteria measured, TPRA fell short of best practice in six of seven areas. Additional practices BGA doesn't even talk about is accepting open records by any means the city and citizens determine, allowing citizens to photocopy with their personal electronic devices, standardizing statewide practices instead of these permissive policies by any government entity. Anyway, when the TPRA measures best practice, then we can talk about charging citizens.
When this is over, can I borrow that bell? My name's Kevin Begert. I live in Sumner County. I'd like to speak to the question of whether fees should be charged for inspecting government documents. The short answer is no. In a constitutional republic, which is the form of government that our state was founded under, a fundamental principle is that laws are instituted to protect minorities. The single most vulnerable minority is the individual citizen. Every time a law is enacted, a simple question should be asked: Does this law protect the individual citizen? The proposed legislation clearly does not answer this question in the affirmative. This law will restrict the single mom from checking into the development of their child's school curriculum. This law will restrict retired elderly couples from checking to see whether their government is spending their money wisely. This law will effectively shield government individuals or entities that don't want the common citizen from looking over their shoulder. When deciding the fate of this legislation, in addition to this basic question of, "Does this law protect the individual citizen?", I ask you to honestly and truthfully seek the answers to a few more questions. Why would a couple of individual citizens from Sumner County drive three-plus hours to attend an ACOG meeting in Knoxville yesterday just to watch and give testimony to a government entity who is considering putting constraints on auditing of governmental activities? They're not paid, they're not reimbursed, or a lobbyist group representing some special interest group. Why would the News Herald quote a member of the Advisory Committee on Open Government that "The impetus behind this legislation stems from a dispute between political activists and a school board in Sumner County after the district received voluminous requests from the public"? When during a recent lawsuit that Mr. Jakes spoke about, Sumner County School Board official testified that the school board receives twelve to fifteen per year, on average. Doesn't seem voluminous to me. The facts are, this is being used to protect a special interest group. Well, as this actively engaged citizen of Sumner County, why am I here? Well, I might be vilified as an activist, but to borrow the words of Abraham Lincoln, "I'm here so that government of the people, by the people, for the people shall not perish from this earth." The proposed legislation will place yet another barrier between the people and the intended control of their government. Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Teresa Corleau. I've worked at Nashville Electric Service for more than thirty years, and it's one of my department's responsibility to respond to public records requests. NES understands that openness in government is in the best interest of all, and we're committed to abiding by the Tennessee Public Records Law in spirit and in practice. We have an established policy and process in place to handle records requests, and we readily provide information requested by the media, law firms, law enforcement, government agencies, and individuals. NES processes hundreds of records requests on an annual basis. Unfortunately, a small number of individuals abuse the privilege of free inspection of records by submitting broad records requests that are burdensome to research, collect, and make available for inspection. One request submitted for inspection, but it's one request that's submitted for inspection, but the one request is in actuality composed of thousands of individual records that make up the larger request. Examples that we've received include all easements and poll numbers in ZIP Code 37072, and cellphone records for every employee. While the number of requesters who abuse the inspection provision are few, their requests are costly to ratepayers because it takes a large amount of staff time and resources to research, compile, and make the records available in a format suitable for inspection. Most records are electronic now, so it's difficult. The requester spends a fraction of the time, if any, reviewing the records that require many, many hours of staff time to compile. To mitigate the cost to ratepayers, NES suggests not charging labor for inspection requests that are for specific records. For single requests that are in actuality composed of thousands of individual records, NES suggests that the first three hours of the labor cost to research, collect, and make the records available be free of charge, but that the请求be charged for labor costs to produce the records for inspection after that three hours. NES has, and we will continue to support the public records law. We believe that charging for inspection of broad records requests that are in actuality thousands of records included in one is in the best interest of ratepayers and the public. Thank you for your consideration of this change.
Good morning. I'm Brian Paddock. I'm an attorney. I am the legal chair of the Tennessee chapter of the Sierra Club. My volunteer job, day by day, is to listen to activists who are concerned about pollution and adverse environmental impacts in their community all over. In addition to members of the club, I'm in contact with many other activists, many from communities of color, many from places with economic disadvantage, who don't have the faintest idea of how to deal with either state or local government about the problems that they're having. I appreciate Public Records Council. My experience in involving Public Records Council and assisting in getting misunderstandings by local governments particularly about public records sorted out has been good, and to have that kind of an ombudsman role available is extremely valuable. We would oppose fees for inspection, and let me give you an example. About five years ago, I was contacted by a person in Upper East Tennessee, and the community had been approached, and particularly the Industrial Development Board, with a proposal to- with a proposal to set up a plant that would turn coal into diesel fuel by an organization called Freedom Energy Diesel, which claimed to have a secret and not patented process, a vast supply of coal available, and all they needed was a place to put their plant and a little economic assistance to help make it come into existence, although they claimed to have their own investors. The difficulty with this was that in that community, there was a complete lack of independent and critical media, unfortunately, because both broadcast and print media are controlled by one owner. And as it turned out, I and another attorney who's also a local blogger asked for records about the Industrial Development Board and what they were doing here, and why they thought any of this made any sense at all, and we wound up spending half a day inspecting piles of records, many of which were duplicates, because emails have at least two recipients, two parties, and often more, and paying $150 to have a CD made of the documents we selected that were scanned. It turned out that the whole thing never materialized, that while the site was allocated to this company, they never fulfilled any of their agreements. So, we would support no fees for inspection, reduced fees for documents, and we support the League of Women Voters comments particularly with respect to the proposed policies here. Thank you.
This is the last person who registered and showed an interest in speaking today. We have called out six names earlier of people who had registered to speak but did not respond when your name was called. We still have some time left in the allotment of the public hearing. Is there anyone here who has not spoken that would like to have a three-minute opportunity to speak? Anybody? I kind of feel like my brother who's a preacher doing an altar call. Anybody, anybody want to come down? Okay, if you'll come up, state your name and affiliation, and we got three minutes.
I apologize, my address I came straight from class to this hearing. My name is Justin Jones, I serve as chairman of the Nashville Student Organizing Committee, and we have an interest in this because as students, we're colluding with students from Fisk University, Tennessee State University, Vanderbilt, MTSU, Nashville-area schools, who are concerned about this because we, as students, are often doing research in these, in these various fields of, I'm a political science major, so making requests for records in my research and my studies, and so, we, as students, are concerned about this issue because we feel like it will impose an undue burden even on us as students who are doing research simply for our classes or to be more engaged in the political process, and so, we find this to be inconsistent with even what we're learning in classes at this time. I just came here straight from my constitutional law class, and in my class, we're talking about how government needs to be accessible to the public and to citizens, and I think it's really, says a lot about our system of government when we are discouraging students from a very young age to be not involved and not active in the democratic process, and so, I don't know who I'm addressing, that's why I'm looking everywhere, but I just think, I just think that we, as students, are very concerned about this. One of the speakers spoke about the relative cost of this, and as students, even getting here today, to have to pay for parking, then to have to pay to get copies of records, and have to pay to see them, as students, we're trying to just pay to get something else to eat besides cafeteria food. So, I think that, I mean, this is something that really affects us as students, and so, I hope that we don't take government of the people, for the people, and by the people, from the people. I think this is not an issue of left or right, but a moral issue of right or wrong. We see people here from the news media, we see people here from the Tea Party, and we see people here from taxpayer groups, we see the Sierra Club, the League of Women Voters, we have students here. This is about people in general, it's not a partisan issue, and so, I think that we see the diversity of people here against this law, and I think that we should, we should listen to the people, because this is one time when the people are actually on the same accord. Thank you.
Thank you. Last call, last call. All right, you'll want to get out a pen and paper real quick. First off, let me repeat a great big thank you for you being here today. As we stated earlier, this spoken record is not the only means you have to allow your voice to be heard. If you would like to submit additional, submit comments or expand on the comments you made verbally today, you can email those to commentsopenrecords@cot.tn.gov. Again, that's comments openly records@cot.tn.gov. If you want to hear the comments made last night in Knoxville, if you want to listen to the comments made here again, if you want to hear the comments that will be made tomorrow in Jackson, those will be available on the Open Record YouTube page that we maintain here in the Comptroller's Office. No video, it will be all audio. You can go, and we'll have those up there to listen. Surveys are also available, Anne may go over that link in just a minute, but you could, there's also a survey out there for citizens and a survey out there for government entities. All of the comments we collect, whether they're collected verbally, written, or by survey, will be given to the legislature who asks us to hold these hearings, and they will use your input as they make decisions. The surveys, the comments, will be accepted through September 30th, so you still have a couple weeks to get those in. And after September 30th, we will compile them. The written comments we receive, of course, will be in open record, and they're extremely voluminous, and we are working with our IT department right now to try to figure out how to get those available in a download or something like that. I can tell you, the file is already several hundred pages, which is too much to email reasonably between links, so we're going to figure out a way to get those to you. Anne, any closing comments?
Again, thank you all so much for your interest and for sharing your experiences. Please, once again, would the members of the Advisory Committee who are here, please raise your hand, because these are the folks that you may know either from your communities or from your associations, and please use them and channel information. You can always contact us directly, but please also use our Advisory Committee members. Also, I'd like to recognize Alicia Hodge, who I used to work with. She was the Open Records Council, and I know that many of you have worked with her in the past. She is currently working for N-PAS, but she is here today too. If you have any other items related to this particular study, please use the email address that Chief of Staff Mom Power gave you. The open records, please use for your ongoing concerns on open records and open meetings, but any matters related to this study, please use that separate email address so we can try to keep those cleaner and be better with our record keeping.
With that, we appreciate very much having had you a guest here in the Office of the Comptroller, and we thank you for coming out.